I'm going to call the Wednesday, August 16th, 2017, meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals to Order. We have a roll call, please.
Ms. Chester, Mr. Cho, Ms. McLaughlin?
Here.
Ms. Yutman?
Here.
Mr. Warrenburn?
Here.
Mr. Weiskopf?
Here.
And Mr. Welch?
Here. We have a quorum. Are there any changes to the agenda? At this time, I'm calling for the approval of the minutes of the May 17th, 2017 ZBA meeting. Go ahead.
One correction, where it says members present, and under it, it says members present, but it should be members absent.
Oh, thank you.
Are there any other corrections or additions? At this time, then, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes as drafted with the one correction.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
The minutes will be approved. Any written communications? All right. At this time, I would ask anybody who intends to speak to the zoning board tonight to please stand and be sworn. Do you swear affirm that any testimony you give to the board tonight will be true and accurate to the best of your belief?
Yeah, I do.
Thank you. Are there any continued public hearings? Then at this time, I would call for hearing, ZBA 2017-C-01, request for a conditional use permit to allow daycare facility. Maybe we have a staff report, please.
ZBA case 2017-C-01 is a request by Andrew Fell on behalf of Corley Rentals LLC for a conditional use permit to allow a daycare facility at 1809 South Philo Road in the B3 General Business Zoning District. The subject property may be used as a daycare facility with a conditional use permit according to the City of Urbana's zoning ordinance. The applicant states that the daycare facility would provide relevant services that are not currently centrally available to residents of the surrounding districts. Showing Exhibit A, the subject property is a 1.21 acre lot on the west side of South Philo Road between Colorado and East Florida avenues in southeast Urbana. The 26,510 square foot one-story building is located west of the Walgreens store, approximately in the center of the exhibit, and is divided into three east-facing storefronts and four south-facing storefronts. The proposed daycare facility would be located in the northernmost storefront, approximately where the cursor is on the screen, which is addressed as 1803 South Philo Road, and that storefront encompasses 5,764 square feet. The storefront is currently vacant and was most recently used for the Hot Slots Radio Controlled Vehicle Hobby Store. Proposed improvements include a large indoor recreation space, five activity spaces, two bathrooms, a reception area, office, and other spaces necessary for the daycare's operation. The main entrance would be to the east, accessing the traffic and fire lane between the storefront and the Walgreens store. There's also a rear door to the west leading to a dumpster area. No building expansion or cooking facilities have been proposed at this time. According to a 2007 parking and access easement with the northerly and southerly adjacent property owners, parking is shared across all of the lots. There's approximately 260 shared parking spaces available to the merchants and their customers across the Sunny Crest Shopping Center, this building, and as well as the former County Market Store to the south. Judy Woodall would lease the space from the owner, Corley Rentals, and operate the proposed daycare facility. She currently operates the Bradley Learning Center located at 1311 East Florida Avenue. Similar to this daycare facility, Ms. Woodall anticipates enrolling 50 to 60 school-aged children for before and after-school programs with operating hours of 6:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. According to the second exhibit, the subject property and the land to the north, south, and east are zoned B3 general business. The subject property is part of a shopping center which includes Planet Fitness, many personal service establishments, and a standalone Walgreens store to the east. To the north lies Sunny Crest Center with retail, personal service, and professional service establishments and restaurants. To the south lies the former County Market Grocery Store, currently vacant, with attached restaurant storefronts and a standalone retail shops and a gasoline station. Further east lies the Urbana Lighthouse Church of the Nazarene and Secure Self-Storage and the standalone Heartland Bank and CVS Pharmacy, all zoned B3. To the west lies Crestview Park, which is zoned conservation, recreation, and education. This shows up as the green blob to the west. At least six multifamily residential apartment buildings lie further out to the northeast and west. According to Exhibit C, the City of Urbana's 2005 comprehensive plan designates the future land uses for the subject property and the surrounding area as community business. The area of Crestview Park continues to be designated for future park use, and there is multifamily further out to the northwest and west. As already stated, the surrounding area contains many multifamily apartment buildings whose residents might benefit from conveniently located childcare services. The facility is easily accessible by pedestrians and is located near major transit routes and the bike lanes along South Philo Road. The property owner would maintain the footprint of the building and therefore not increase its impact on neighboring properties. This daycare operation would be exempt from licensing by the Illinois Department of Children and Family Services, but still would be regulated and inspected to a certain extent, including determining the total number of children that could be served, which is based on the age of the children, the room sizes, the group sizes, and the number of staff available. DCFS will be asked to inspect the site pending the Zoning Board of Appeals' approval of the conditional use permit. According to the Champagne Office of DCFS, preliminary estimates for this proposed facility would be a maximum of 20 children in attendance at any one time and a minimum staffing level of one staff person to 20 school-aged children. This proposed application appears to meet the Urbana zoning ordinance's three requirements for a conditional use permit. First, the proposed use is conducive to the public convenience at this location because the proposed location along South Philo Road is very accessible to potential clients, as it lies along a major thoroughfare equipped with bicycle lanes and serviced by transit. The proposed facility will provide essential services that are not currently available centrally to residents of the surrounding single-family and multifamily use districts. Secondly, the proposed daycare facility will not be unreasonably injurious or detrimental to the district in which it shall be located or otherwise injurious to the public welfare because it will be designed to all standards adopted by the Urbana Building Safety Division, as well as any requirements outlined by DCFS. It will be located in an existing separated mixed-use commercial complex that is proximal to several residential neighborhoods and public parks. The facility will also be operated according to all other applicable standards by experienced professionals, as is evidenced by the proposed operator's previous experience operating Bradley Learning Center since 1970. It would also be less intensive than most other commercial development, as it will not be open in the evening or on weekends. It will be limited to daytime business hours, and the majority of traffic activity will be in the morning and the evening to drop off and pick up children. In addition, as stated previously, locating these facilities nearer residential areas provides easier access for residents to daycare services. And finally, the proposed daycare facility use conforms to the regulations and standards of and preserves the essential character of the B3 general business district in which it is proposed to be located. The Philo Road Business District is a small commercial district centrally located in a primarily residential area. Nearby facilities include public parks, elementary schools, and churches. The proposed daycare facility is in character with both the district's current medium-intensity commercial uses and the future community business use designation. As far as development regulations go, the proposal will also meet all of the development regulations of the City of Urbana zoning ordinance, including the requirement of three parking spaces for every two employees for a daycare facility, plus a drop-off and pickup facility for children. Looking at Exhibit D. The site plan, which we will zoom in a little bit. Crestview Park is here to the west. The building is located here, and the proposed parking drop-off area would be located to the north in existing spaces north of the Walgreens store. So parking and drop-off would be located here. There is an existing stop sign and stop line, parking line painted at this location, which is at the site of a currently vacant Mexican restaurant. And then there's additional employee parking along this area here, as well as in any of the other 260 parking spaces available at the site. One correction, Exhibit E in the staff report should be labeled as site plan, not as parking and access easement. I also distributed the proposed floor plan at the beginning of the meeting. This is in addition to the proposed site plan that was included in the memo packet itself. The applicant proposes locating the drop-off pickup facility to the northeast of the main entrance, directly north of the Walgreens store. The following goals from the city's comprehensive plan are relevant to the proposed conditional use permit. Goal four, which is promote a balanced and compatible mix of land uses that will help create long-term viable neighborhoods. Goal five, which is ensure that land use patterns conserve energy. And goal 16, which is ensure that new land uses are compatible with and enhance the existing community. According to the zoning ordinance, the Zoning Board of Appeals shall determine whether or not the application submitted and the evidence produced during the hearing justify the granting of the conditional use permit. The board may also impose additional conditions and requirements, as are appropriate or necessary for the public health, safety, and welfare. And these findings are summarized in the staff memo, including the background on the property and how the application addresses the criteria posed in the zoning ordinance. The Zoning Board of Appeals has the following options in case number ZBA 2017-C-01: to grant the conditional use as submitted, or deny the conditional use as submitted, or grant the conditional use along with any additional conditions and requirements, as are appropriate or necessary for the public health, safety, and welfare, and to carry out the purposes of the zoning ordinance. Planning staff recommends that the Zoning Board of Appeal approve the proposed conditional use in case ZBA 2017-C-01. Should the board approve the proposed use, staff recommends that the use be subject to the following conditions: One, the use must conform to all applicable zoning, building, development, and State of Illinois Department of Children and Family Services codes; and two, that the use generally conforms with the site plan and floor plan submitted in this application, Exhibit E. That is the end of the staff report. We do have members of the architecture firm and as well as the tenant operator available for questions.
Are there any questions for staff?
Let's start with this one. Can the City of Urbana control the signage and traffic patterns and things in a private setting like this shopping center?
I believe they can give recommendations for signage in the private parking lot, but not direct.
The stop sign you said in front of the Mexican restaurant, which is not there today anyway, it's been removed, it appears to me, but that's something if you put a stop, if we set as the condition that a stop sign needed to be there, the shopping center would have to abide by that, or they could make their own rules?
I believe they would have to abide by that, but I will defer.
Well, I will say that, is that on? The spot where the stop sign is or was is not even on the property that is under discussion today, so I'm not sure if there is anything in that easement agreement about access control. So it would be difficult, if not impossible, to impose a condition on a property owner that is probably not even in this room.
Well, the drop-off zone isn't on the property either.
Correct, because there is the parking easement, the, do you have the title for that exact?
Parking and access easement.
The parking and access easement that we know guides, guides the parking here, so that we know that it is available. I'm not sure if that easement has anything in it about any sort of stop signs or other sort of traffic controls.
So in other words, let's see, if I wanted to put two speed bumps in this, what is the, in front of the building between what used to be the two stop signs to slow down the traffic in that one particular block area behind Walgreens, we can't do that, or we could do that?
Well, again, that would be up to that property owner. In this case, at least it's on the subject property. We would also want to discuss something like that with our fire department, as they're often not huge fans of speed bumps. So we wouldn't want to set up something where we're creating conflict. Perhaps there could be guidance, a condition that has some sort of suggestions, if that would make it more comfortable for you. But it's difficult to tie the hands of people that aren't here.
Okay, so then lighting, lighting from the parking drop-off to the entrance, none of that is on their lot either, so that's another issue that we really can't approach?
I'm not sure that staff is familiar with the lighting situation. Maybe one of the applicants has more familiarity with the lighting out there and could describe it to you, unless you are familiar with it and that's why you're making the comment.
Well, I looked at the lights in the parking lot by where the drop-off areas, and what I don't know is if there's a light right on the subject property that's shining straight down, but all the overhead lighting is in the parking lot to the, would be to the, oh, the first, the first light is probably just west of the P in the parking drop-off up there in that diagram. That's where I think the first big light is.
Well, I believe it would be within the Zoning Boards of Appeals' purview to require or recommend conditions for the subject property. So if there was not adequate lighting on the face of the building to light the area that is the traffic lane that is part of the subject property, requiring it to meet the zoning ordinance or some higher standard would be possible because it's on the subject property.
Can you explain to me, there's going to be nobody at this daycare between 8:00 and 3:00 during the day?
I think the applicant could probably better answer specific questions to their operations.
Okay. So then let's go back to the drop-off pickup area. Why can't it be in front of the front door?
That's a fire lane, and it, we, comments from the fire department were that they would not want a drop-off area that's in the fire lane and traffic lane.
There's no notation on that street that it's a fire lane, is there?
I believe there's some faded striping there, and one of their comments was they would like the, they would like, not require, but they would like the striping to be renewed, to indicate that it's a no-parking fire lane.
And that's the shopping center's responsibility again?
That would be this building's responsibility for this section that's in front of its property, yes.
And then I guess, finally, the parking that we all see that is south of Walgreens, which we all assume was Walgreens parking, that parking is not really Walgreens parking? Of course, everybody agrees to park anywhere you want, but that's actually on this subject property?
Yes.
And we're really counting that as employee parking then?
Not necessarily counting it as. The parking and access agreements say that all properties can utilize any of the parking spaces on the three lots. It's possible that the operator would tell their employees, this parking is available to you. If it's full, you've got these other 240 spaces to choose from. But it's all open range parking.
Okay, and I think finally then, I can't find anything that, if I wanted, if the Mexican restaurant was to turn into a bar, there would be no reason not to have the daycare center next to the bar, or the bar next to the daycare center, right?
If the daycare center sighted before the bar, then the bar would not be able to cite. If the bar was already there and the daycare center chose to cite itself next to a bar, I believe.
Why is that?
A bar cannot cite itself within so many feet of certain land uses.
A church or a school.
Correct.
Right. So if we, if we put this daycare center in here, and I guess the definition between a bar and a restaurant is 50% of the income, is that still, so you could put a restaurant in the Mexican restaurant, but you couldn't put a bar in the Mexican restaurant? Is that what we're, we're not tying their hands by doing this, or are we tying their hands?
Tying whose hands? The future owner of the?
The space next door to this.
Well, if you cite any sort of use that has restrictions on other uses citing next to it, you're essentially restricting future land use by citing this desired land use first. Of course, that Mexican restaurant has been vacant, and...
Okay, so you have the hotspot, you familiar with that?
Yes, right around the corner.
What is, I mean, how do we designate these type of places?
I believe it's a video gaming?
Gaming hall.
That serves alcohol, correct? That's part of their license, isn't it?
I believe that's part of their license. I'm not sure of their actual practice.
So we're not worried about that either?
That would be similar, because the daycare facility is choosing to cite itself within their chosen proximity of those existing operations. Similarly, if the daycare facility was cited and a gaming hall wanted to cite near it, it would have to meet the zoning ordinance's requirements.
Do they need to, do they need to grant the people in the hotspot a waiver saying something like that?
No.
I saw some case before the Illinois Liquor Commission in 2008 or 2009 where the people were trying to say that the daycare was a school, and that they couldn't put a liquor store, you know, within 100 feet of them. And I never could figure out what exactly happened, but the Liquor Commission granted the liquor license, but they were going to take them to the Supreme Court, but I couldn't figure out what happened after that.
Was the school already cited?
The daycare was, they were trying to say they were a school because they had certified teachers, and they were offering a couple of classes after school.
But was they already in?
Yeah, it was their first.
Okay, so then this is the exact opposite of that.
But they didn't want the liquor store there.
Oh, that...
So that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
You're asking if a daycare facility would be considered a school?
Is it going to limit the ability of the people to rent the place next door?
To certain uses, similarly to an adult entertainment establishment.
But adult entertainment can't be in a B3, right?
Correct.
But a bar could be.
But it also can't be within certain distances of facilities.
Okay.
Are there any further questions for staff? Go ahead.
So if we grant the conditional use, and let's say I want to open a Mexican restaurant next door, I could do that with a limited liquor license?
I would have to defer.
To be honest, we did not thoroughly research the liquor laws in anticipation of this case, but I believe the idea is, is that a restaurant would be permitted, but not a full-on bar. So if that is a concern, we can certainly research that and get you a 100% answer, but what's before you tonight is whether or not a conditional use permit for a daycare should be granted.
Thank you, Marcus. Is the applicant here or anyone to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Hi, my name is Sam Giglio. I work for Andrew Fell, the main employee in charge of this project.
Why don't you spell your last name for the record?
G-I-G-L-I-O.
Thank you.
So yeah, I mean, I think that staff effectively communicated the intent, I suppose, in response to a couple of the previous concerns. We did research the drop-off issue and communicated with the fire department there. So we're doing our best to work with the fire department and also safety concerns. In terms of stop signs or striping, I have communicated with the owner, who has in turn communicated with Sunny Crest and Neiman, the other two parties, main parties, in the easement, and they have said that it wouldn't be a problem to replace that stop sign or renew any type of paint that would be necessary. I think Marcus brought up a good point about the speed bumps in terms of having to kind of clear that with the fire department, because they didn't want to drive up in that area anyway, even if it wasn't speed bumped. So in terms of that question, I think in terms of the lighting, the owner might be able to possibly provide a bit more insight, but I think there are a couple pendant lights as are illustrated in the photos. There aren't any overhead floodlights, and again, I'd have to communicate with the owner in terms of providing something if something like that was a condition to the permit. And then finally, in terms of limiting use, additionally to add, I have a line in the easement here, so I have a copy of the actual easement in section D4, or D3, rather. It says... actual easement, um, in section D4, um, or D3, rather. Um, it says that lots shall not be used or operated already for carnivals, temporary vendors, and then the third, the third item it lists is nightclubs. Um, so I don't know if nightclubs encompasses bars. Um, I'm not sure. The wording of the easement is nightclubs. Um, but I don't know if that goes on to encompass a certain type of atmosphere, or if it's, if they make the majority of their profits from alcohol, or if it distinguishes between a restaurant that serves alcohol and a bar. Um, but that's the language in the easement. And so, um, I guess then, more generally, um, the easement, uh, limits certain uses across all of those, um, property owners. And so, in terms of regulating uses, um, generally, that's already happening as something that's a part of the easement as well. So, um, that's kind of what I've kind of thought of in terms of the questions to staff, but if you have any further questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Any questions for this? Yes, go ahead.
Just quickly, when you mentioned the striping and the stop sign, were they, was that a commitment to do that, or they just said that that was possible? I couldn't tell by your language the extent to which you talked about that.
Um, so from talking to, uh, the owner, Mr. Corley, um, they said that that would be a possibility, um, if required.
But I was under the impression that we couldn't require it.
Would you like me to clarify my statement?
Sure.
Um, the idea, I was concerned about placing a condition on this applicant, which was the responsibility of a different property owner. So I was concerned about making it impossible for the applicant to do something because they don't have control of that land.
Right. Okay. Thank you. That was it.
Any additional questions or comments?
You said you met with, uh, the owner of, I guess, the Sunnycrest Mall?
Uh, I've met with the owner of our property, who has communicated with the other parties of the easement, uh, Mr. Corley, who is present.
I was just wondering if, I guess, if they were aware that because there's a daycare, and if they had a restaurant that wanted to serve alcohol, that, that could potentially be limiting, and if that owner would be aware and, I guess, fine with that.
Okay. Um, that is something that I think we can communicate, um, with the other parties in the easement. Um...
Andrew Fell?
You'll have to sign in.
Um, I just wanted to add, um...
You might want to identify what capacity, even though I think we can...
Uh, I own Andrew Fell Architecture and Design. Sam's my employee.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add a little side note that, uh, ironically, I'm doing a project in Sunnycrest Shopping Center, and yesterday talked to Kent Fulmer, and he's well aware of this project. He's, he's the tenant's current landlord, so he knows they're moving, and he knows where they're moving to, and he had no objections to what they were doing.
Thank you for that clarification. Are there additional questions?
And I would also like to point out that the, the owner of the building is here, if you'd like to ask him questions directly.
So, Mr. Fell, what you just said was that she's going to leave her other business that's at 1311 Florida and move into this place, and, and are she going to have two businesses?
Uh, I honestly don't know.
There, it's going to be operated into, in addition to...
What, what kind of agreement? I mean, I'd miss the point, what, uh, Mr. Fulmer was okay with.
He knows that, that she's opening a, a daycare facility in this new location. So it's, so my point is that the adjacent property owner is not blind to what's happening, and he, he at least didn't experience, you know, voice any objections to me about it, and was happy that she's expanding her business.
Other questions? Thank you to both of you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor of this, uh, application? Anyone opposed?
If the, if the, if, if the woman who was going to run the business is out there, I, I would like to ask her some questions, if possible.
Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Judy Woodall. I'm the director of Bradley Learning Center.
Would you sign in as well?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
I am the director of Bradley Learning Center, and this was starting out as an expansion of our program, because we started a program about five years ago that dealt with children from age six years old into 12 years old, in an adventure of an after-school program. And when we saw that the after-school program was definitely needed in our community, and we first sought out another facility in the current building that we're in, and we were looking for more space. And they did not have the space that they could actually let us expand it directly in that building. And that's when we started looking for more space that was in the, the area that we were in. And this is where we came across Mr. Corley's building, and started looking to a possibility of expanding our program in another building.
Any questions for the applicant?
Is your current, um, facility behind Papa Johnson?
Yes.
And...
It's actually from six weeks to 12 years old. And we started the after-school program, actually, we was trying to see if it would be something that we could do, and we started that about five years ago. And it started out very small, but now it is growing. So we have a need to separate the age groups, and putting from seven years old to 12 years old in another building.
So I was very unfamiliar with this. So, do people drop off their children at 6:30 or 7:00 in the morning because they have to go to work at 7:30 or 8:00? How do they get to school?
Exactly. When they drop their kids off at 6:30 in the morning, then we take care of them until it's time for them to go to school. Then we transport them to the school.
You actually transport them yourself?
Some of them.
Uh-huh.
Some school buses pick up also there.
Some school buses do. And the school buses, I suppose, they would go pick up in front? Is that what we're assuming at the door?
Yes, they do in front, and they drop off in front.
Okay, so that's not a problem. Then, do you, do you see any problem with having your, uh, drop-off zone and the parent pickup zone upward, it's, uh, you know, 50 feet from your front door, whatever that distance is, I'm not sure what that is. You'd love a stop sign there, I assume?
Of course. I mean, I mean, you always want to regulate the traffic that is going through the community, but it was sort of similar to that at the location we're in now, where we were able, over the years, to get it controlled a lot better than it would have been, because right next door, we have Pace, that is next door.
Mm-hmm.
Whereas they do have a lot of traffics as well. So, but we've worked on it, since we've been there quite a few years, we've worked on it over the years, that we've got it under control now.
So you'd have the older kids at this facility and your younger children at your current facility, is that...
Exactly. We will keep them at the old building until they turn seven years old, and then they will transfer to the other building, where we'll have more innovative ideas and projects going on there.
Are you planning anything outdoors?
Well, we do outdoors now, which, there is a park across the street, uh, which they are supposed to be out a certain amount of time in the course of a day. So we do, uh, in the back, we do have a playground for the younger kids, but the older kids go to the park.
Okay. So they'd probably just go out your back door?
Exactly.
To the park?
Yes.
Okay. And I, the other thing, I guess, is, uh, how many, so we're breaking this down, seven and up, and somebody in here, the DCFS, said that 20 with one supervising person, and you were somewhere, I believe you wanted, was it 20 to 60, or 40 to 60, 50 to 60? Are you counting both age groups there, or you, would there be like 50 to 60, seven and above?
Well, I think, I think what they do is they go, especially when it's a school-age program, that is not as regulatory as it would be if they were from infants or toddlers, or twos, threes, and fours, up to the age of five. But when it gets into the school age, they give you a specific that you can have a certain amount of kids with the racial of one teacher, whatever it might be. So, when we started this project, we started it in lieu of hoping that we can offer opportunities for the kids to grow and enhance their growing by providing, uh, a different agenda, like music, uh, dance, uh, sewing, and, uh, technology, and arts and craft. So, we were going to put in this building some of those things that will actually enhance their growth. And so, when we decided to do it that a way, we decided that they will come in at the time whenever we do have the programs running. And we have already have volunteers that will come in from the University of Illinois that will help us as far as their, uh, see what they're interested in, and just targeting the area that we can help them grow in.
So you're probably going to have more than a 1 to 20 ratio?
Well, like I said, this is new. It's an expansion, but it's also new. So we will explore the poss, possibilities, but also, we have to make sure that we're regulated by the Department of Children and Family Service.
Right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions from the board? Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this proposal? Anyone opposed? I'd like to say something. Um... The questions about whether or not the granting of the conditional use permit will restrict any further or future use is really not a question that I feel is before the board or actually should be considered by the board. Um, there, as usually is the staff's prerogative, they include an omnibus provision, usually in their proposals, that anything that we may grant will have to comply with various regulations of the city, this, and the state, and maybe even sometime the federal government. That would cover a lot of what is and was a concern tonight. For example, if, if we grant this, and DCFS comes and does their inspection and says that that video game facility is too close, they won't approve it and will tend to moot out whatever we may do. We are kind of being asked to approve the allowance of a structure. Some of the rest of what has been concerned, or expressed as concerns about the operation and its effect on future operations is actually, in my opinion, issues that will be dealt with, with elsewhere. These meetings are, uh, published to the public, including their subject matter, and concerns from any body opposed can also be expressed. So I believe that if we approve this with the attached condition language, that the use must conform with overlying regulations that allow the operation of this type of facility, including lighting and traffic flow, I, which I assume will be taken into account by others, some of our concerns can be alleviated. So I just say that to remind, um, when making, if we make any motions here, that I think we have covered, or this has been covered, I guess I should say, by the staff, by saying that in allowing this use, we are not actually, um, opening this facility for business. It will still have to pass further, uh, inspections and regulations. Thank you. Um, I believe we've heard from the audiences. Any further questions from staff, or any comments?
So we can only impose conditions on the, uh, things that are going to be on Lot 200? That's, that's your, that's the stance we're taking here?
Well, unless they have, um, approval from that other property owner, it would, it could be impossible for them to meet their conditions otherwise, and it would make their approval moot. Or it could, if they couldn't get permission.
I mean, so is it simple enough to say that he needs to put a stop sign somewhere in the fire lane in front of his property, and assume that he's going to put it in the right place? I mean, if this was on a street, we would, you know, it would be a totally different situation. But it's not on a street, so. And my concern is, it's really, it's the safety there. Uh, I'm there quite a bit in that area, and people drive through there, people walk through there. It's a shortcut for people, actually pedestrians walking, and they don't walk on the sidewalk, they walk in the street. Uh, and if you have children there doing anything, you know, we want to slow down the traffic as, as much as possible, I think.
Perhaps you could write a, um, a more general condition that would allow some flexibility, so, uh, terminology like, um, enhanced traffic control, and then we could figure out how to make that work to the best of the ability, based on what the property owner's willing to do. So it gives direction, but allows some flexibility. I mean, I think everyone here knows the intent, based on the discussion tonight. So I think that the property owners would probably have a discussion. Um, my fear is to put something very specific that might not be possible. So if you could find some language that was more general, allowed some flexibility, but would still get at the same result, um, better safety, better traffic control, maybe that's an approach you could consider.
Well, I think it's time for the board to deal with this question. So is there any motions to be made in regards to the case before us?
Okay. I'm going to move that, uh, we approve ZBA case 2017-C-01, uh, with the following conditions, that the use must conform to all applicable zoning, building, development, and State of Illinois Department of Children and Family Service codes. Number two, that the use generally conforms with the site plan and floor plan submitted in this application, Exhibit E. And number three, that the... And number three, that the applicant work with the city to establish traffic control and, uh, striping, uh, to promote, uh, safety of the area.
It's been moved. Is there a second to that motion?
One second, ma'am.
Is there any discussion in regards to that?
Can I ask a question? Is the city the appropriate entity to be working with in that particular area, since it's a private parking lot?
I guess what is meant by work with the city, um, help, we as a city help brainstorm and facilitate a discussion between the property owners, or-
Exactly what you had just mentioned previously, that you would suggest things and say these things, and we evidently don't have any control, is, is what you're getting at. So it would have to be an agreement between all parties. But if that doesn't include all parties, we could add in the other shopping center people, Neimans and Sunnycrest, I guess, if you wanted that language in there.
Well, you, you made the motion. Are you going to amend it?
No, I'm not going to amend it, because I was just trying to keep it to lot, uh, 200. I guess, is that the lot number 200?
All right, well, it's been moved. And second, are we ready to call that motion for a vote?
Yes.
Please call it for a vote.
Mr. Cho?
Uh, yes.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Ms. Hugman?
Yes.
Mr. Warren Brad?
Yes.
Mr. Weiskopf?
Yes.
Mr. Welch?
Yes. The motion carries. And since this is just a conditional use, it's, doesn't have to be sent anywhere, right? All right.
No.
Any audience participation?
No.
Is there a staff report?
No.
Any study session?
No.
Then I move that this meeting be adjourned.